Nancy, who sponsored the...
Susie. I am a State Department customer, but I don't...
A lot of people have questions out there.
Yeah, they'll never get to them.
I like Zen, um, Zen Gong.
Good e- good evening, everyone. Hi. I'm Nancy Marr and I'm the Voter Service Director for the League of Women Voters of Palos Verdes. And I've been working with the city and with some of the other residents to set up this forum tonight. The League is pleased to be working with the Chamber, PV Chamber of Commerce tonight in presenting this event. We want to thank the candidates for coming and welcome them, and thank all of you for coming. And welcome to you to the forum tonight. Both the League and the Chamber are nonpartisan organizations, meaning we don't endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The candidates drew lots for speaking order, and they're sitting in that order. Just a reminder, this isn't a debate tonight, and it's not a town hall either. It's just a forum where the candidates' ideas are shared with you, the audience. I also want to note that our two people who are reviewing questions tonight are Karen Barash, raise your hand, Karen, who is the President of the Palos Verdes League of Women Voters, and Eileen Hupp, who is the Executive Director of the Palace Verdes Peninsula Chamber of Commerce. We do have three cameras filming tonight. They are here independently. They are not associated with either the League of Women Voters or the Chamber. There are two homeowners groups and an independent filmer. And now we'd like to introduce, I would like to introduce, our moderator for the evening, Linda Herman. Linda is on the Board of the League of Women Voters of Palos Verdes. She is a past local president and a past state president, and has a lot of experience as a moderator. And she will be conducting the forum tonight. Thank you.
Well, I've got a bit of a repetition here, and I also like to welcome you to today's Candidates Forum. As you know, we have two, we're sponsored by the League and by the Chamber. Our forums are conducted for informational purposes without a hidden agenda, and are controlled by principled nonpartisanship, as was already stated. And your vote is an essential step in the process of democracy. Just to note, we are aware that a candidate forum was held a week ago under the sponsorship of the Palos Verdes Residents for Responsible Government, and are pleased to provide a second opportunity for candidates to address pertinent issues their constituents may be concerned about. We are therefore pleased to present the following six candidates who are seeking a position on the Palos Verdes State City Council. In order, David McGowan, Kevin McCarthy, Betty Lynn Peterson, Victoria Lozey. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Michael, sorry, Michael Kempz and Jennifer King. Each, Jeff Groves, has withdrawn from the election and is no longer a candidate. Before going on, I should mention I was giving some, given some warnings about making sure everybody is heard, so if the videographer is all right with everything, we'll move on. He also asked that the candidates look directly at the person who's doing the video, so that you will be heard. Just want to make sure I follow his instructions. Each candidate has agreed to abide by the guidelines stipulated in the letter of invitation. The format is as follows. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement, and then one minute to respond to questions from the audience. Our timers will hold up a card indicating when their time is up. While we will not try, while we try not to stop you in mid-sentence, please be responsive to the time limitations. I would ask the audience that you remain as quiet as possible while the candidates are speaking, so that everyone may hear. And please hold your applause until the forum has ended, so that the candidates will have all the time possible for getting their points across. And as usual, we ask that you turn off your cellphones. Should there be time available after all questions have been submitted, we will open up the forum, I'm sorry, we're doing that differently. We're going to take questions from, that have been submitted, as well as questions from the audience, and we'll kind of bounce back and forth from one, one resource to another. We will, we will conclude our questions and answer period at 8:50, and each candidate will then present a one-minute closing statement. It appears the video recording of our forum will be available for public viewing. I just wanted to mention, we have received a number of questions online in addition to a number of questions that have been presented here today. So we will not get to all of them, so please be, be understanding of that. Please hold up the cards as you finish your questions, and somebody will be around to pick them up. I think that's already happened, too. You may address your question to a particular candidate or to all, but other candidates will be given the opportunity to respond as well. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area may be consolidated to allow us to cover as many topics as possible in the time allotted. All questions become the property of the League of Women Voters and the Chamber of Commerce. And the order of opening statements was determined by Lot, as was mentioned before we began. So we begin with Mr. McGowan.
Thank you. My wife Lynn and I have been residents in Palos Verdes Estates for 23 years, and I am one of the five residents that was selected to be a member of the Financial Advisory Committee. I bring a 50-year professional accounting and financial background to our city. I have an undergraduate degree in accounting from the University of Denver. I have an MBA from Kellogg School of Management at Northwestern. I'm a certified public accountant. I have, hold the certificate in management accounting, and I'm also a certified fraud examiner. I've held senior executive positions in finance and general management in both manufacturing and financial services, namely Medtronic, Inc., the biomedical manufacturer, and in the Financial Services, Inc., Northwest Corporation, currently known as Wells Fargo, and U.S. Bank System, currently known as U.S. Bank. For the last 30 years, I have been running dispute analysis and resolution practices with the public accounting sector. I'm a retired senior partner of PricewaterhouseCoopers, and I currently have my own company, Lenata Bay Associates. I'm familiar with how cities do their municipal accounting and provide assistance to the County of Los Angeles, the City of Los Angeles, Orange County bankruptcies, and a number of other different areas. My, my threshold or issues are safety, security, and fiscal integrity. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening, thank you for being here. I've been a resident, my wife and I have been residents here since 1997. We live up in the Espinosa Circle. We raised two girls here. We have horses at the stable. 11 days ago, I retired from the Los Angeles Police Department, where I worked for 39 years. My last assignment, I was, for the last 10 years, I've been in charge of detectives and over really neat stuff, the kind of stuff that they make movies about, murders and serial rapists and extortions and kidnapped. I've been retired for 11 days, and my wife told me I need to find a job. Here I am. So one of, I had a couple of other functions in the police department. I represented the Chief of Police at multiple task force committees, L.A. Impact, which is an L.A. County Chiefs Initiative, L.A. HIDA, which is High Indensity Traffic Area with federal agents. And additionally, I'm the President of the Los Angeles Police Relief Association. We're elected members, nonprofit, and we administer the health benefits to 16,000 active and retired people. Thank you for that. So my, my three points are public safety. You know, my 39 years in public safety, that's pretty much all I did. It's all operations. I think I can bring value to the council with, with all my operational experience. Accountability. I was also part of a CompStat process where we held command offices accountable for everything. We counted everything. We counted beans, we counted arrests, we counted. And I think accountability on the council is really important. And finally, transparency. Transparency in verbal communications as well as written communication, so.
Thank you. No? Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Just thought the clock over.
I couldn't see it from here.
The bottom line is, I think I bring, I can bring a lot of value to the council, and the only thing I'm really, I'm not taking contributions. The only thing I'm asking for is your vote. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Peterson.
Hi. I'm Betty Lynn Peterson. I've been a resident of Palos Verdes Estates since 1990. Graduated from the Peninsula Schools District. This is my fourth year on the City Council, and I'm the current mayor. So thank you for being here. Four years ago, when I was encouraged by multiple Palos Verdes Estates residents to run for the council, I was flattered and somewhat amused. I'm a businesswoman. My forte is in real estate. I do sales, development, construction, and property management. Public service was never, was not in my trajectory. But after giving it some serious thoughts, I thought this aligns with my purpose, that I wanted to contribute back to the society, and also, you know, this is my big why, I wanted to make a difference. So I threw my hat in the ring with no other contenders. The election was actually canceled. So as the mayor, my goal was, and still is, to rebuild this community. I'm the unifier. We've been through some rough waters these last four years. The City Council inherited the Parklands lawsuit. The City Council blindsided by the naysayers and skeptics, who lost Measure D. The City Council, after losing Measure D, urgently and carefully put Measure E back on the ballot, because without Measure E, we would have been bankrupt. Let me say that again, we would have been bankrupt. As part of my initiative to rebuild the community is to promote dialogue. I started doing monthly walk and talk with the mayor, and also to promote our local businesses. I started monthly PVE eats with the mayor. But one of my most, my most proudest accomplishments was actually to settle the Parklands lawsuit. Because being in 14-hour mediation and encouraging parties to come to a resolution when there's so many strong personalities at the table was an art form. And being mentally tougher and wanting to make sure that what we do is the right thing for our residents is dedication and seeing the big picture. This is why I deserve your vote on March 4th, I mean, March 5th. Or a day earlier.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lozey.
Hi. I'm Victoria Lozey, and in case you didn't know, I'm your current city treasurer. Serving as city treasurer, combined with my 30-year career in corporate banking, I believe that makes me experienced enough to be an effective city council member. Why am I running? I am running because I strongly believe we need new leadership. When I ran for city treasurer two years ago, for me, the issues were lack of transparency, poor communication to residents, and lack of long-term vision and planning. From a person who attends every city council meeting, I don't think the issues have changed. As treasurer, I've been immersed in the city finances for the past two years. I've learned a lot in that time, and the first thing I learned is that we need to do things differently. We need to think and operate a little more like a business with limited resources. We need to make sure we're running our operations as efficiently as possible. We need to work on a balanced budget and a long-term plan. I was shocked when I became treasurer to find that there was no long-term plan other than a one- or two-year budget. We can't let things like pension obligations and capital improvement fester. We have a lot of negative financial trends that are not being addressed, and they won't be addressed without long-term planning. While I feel that the challenges on the horizon are largely financial, and that's my area of expertise, there's more to serving on the city council. We need to be able to see the big picture. We need to work with residents to address their ideas and concerns. And we need to sometimes help neighbors work out issues. Last summer, I participated in the City Citizens Academy to make sure that I was looking at city operations, not just from a financial perspective, but from the big picture, and I accomplished that. I think I am the most well-rounded candidate for city council. I am focused on the financial picture and the big picture. We need forward-looking, independent thinkers to lead our city. I think we need a change in leadership, and I think this election is an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kempz.
Good evening. My name is Michael Kempz. I've been married to my wife Gemma for 23 years, and at 17 years old, I launched a technology firm that spans three cities. We employ 50 and have been profitable for 30 years. Integrity, accountability, and respect guide my life. I believe this is a change election. The character of Palos Verdes Estates is at risk. Our city is an ecological jewel. Our incumbents support urbanizing our city with increased density and risks to our natural beauty. First, they voted to appeal a case where a judge said that our City and Homes Association wrongly sold parkland. Now, $345,000 later, they want us to believe that their poison pill settlement didn't sell parkland. It did. They enabled the sale of 1.3 acres of parkland to a private party, which frankly never would have happened if the city attorney had not spearheaded the idea, as then Mayor Byrd disclosed publicly in 2012. Now they want to disregard our CCNRs and deed restrictions again. They almost passed a new ordinance, and that would enable secondary dwelling units and flipping garages into rentable apartments. The plan was hidden in a consent agenda, and it was designed to bypass the Planning Commission. Beyond this, they're planned on altering the natural habitat of Lenata Bay cliffs with no resident endorsement. Again, this election is about changing our trajectory. We have a colossal failure of leadership, which has broken trust with residents. Trust must be restored with truth. While the city has been arguing about the definition of debt and deficits, our reserves have been depleted, our pension debt nearly doubled, and our deed restrictions were placed at risk. We need solutions instead of rhetoric. I'm committed to protecting our resources and telling you the truth.
Thank you. Ms. King.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer King. I've lived here for 20 years. I've raised my family here, and I'm just finishing my first term on the city council. By way of background, I served on both the Parklands Committee and the Planning Commission before I decided to file for election in 2015. I'm very proud of what our city council has accomplished during the past four years. We focused on resident engagement. We've created four new advisory committees. We created the Citizens Academy, and we conducted the first-ever city survey, which has been helpful in prioritizing resources. We have also enhanced transparency. We've updated our website and content and format. We've implemented new programs, OpenGov and Questus, which are basically digital file cabinets of our financial information, as well as all our records, ordinances, minutes, resolution, available to you anytime. And I personally have been available to meet with you, one-on-one or in small groups, by phone or by email, to answer your questions or to find those answers. And I've met with many of you in the room here. We've also been a fiscally conservative council. We've balanced our operating budget every year. We have incurred no debt. And despite the failure of Measure D to gain a two-thirds majority, which meant we lost $5 million that we will never recover, we have maintained over $10 million in reserves. And we've done that by making significant cuts in our operating budget, including the police budget, by eliminating, deferring, or extending certain capital projects. We have formed the Finance Advisory Committee to help us engage in long-range planning, recognizing that increasing pension liability and ongoing infrastructure needs will, in the future, cause our expenses to outpace our revenues. So why am I running for reelection? I love our city. I've worked hard to protect it, but I see that there are challenges ahead presented by state mandates, rising pension costs, and our infrastructure needs. But these can also present an opportunity, an opportunity for us to work together as a community, to engage in a thoughtful process as we figure out how to meet these challenges without sacrificing the community character that's at the heart of our city. In short, I want to work with you to protect and preserve our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into questions, and I think rather than go automatically with, with Mr. McGowan beginning, perhaps we can start with Mr. McCarthy, and then we'll go down the line there. So the first question asks the following. The city's general fund balance committed for emergency contingencies is established at 7.2 million. In your opinion, is this emergency reserve level too much, too little, or about right? If it is not about right, why, and what would you do about it?
Wow. You know, I don't have a good handle on what the city needs as far as a reserve. I know the reserve has, has been higher, and we had to draw down on that because of the failure of Measure E. But there's a lot of things to consider with the pension, with the, with the budget. I'm kind of at a loss, so I'm going to defer to.
Okay, Ms. Peterson.
First of all, our, our reserves are actually at 9 million. It's 50% of our operating budget by policy. And this is something that we've actually directed to the FAC to do a study, to see if there's too much money in our reserves, and if we can use some of that money to pay down unfunded liabilities or put it in infrastructure. But as the FAC had already discussed, 50% may be the right amount for now. So since they're the experts, I would think that that's what they've, they've already done their investigation. So I would say that I would agree with the 50% policy. So I don't think it's too little or too much.
Okay, Ms. Lozey.
I get to put my city treasurer hat on a little bit. So the, the policy is 50% of the budget with a minimum of the 7.2 million. Just maybe clarify that, who was asking the question? So I, it's true, the Finance Committee has been looking at the proper reserve level. I am very conservative. So to me, a 50% reserve is the minimum number. And, you know, if it were up to me, we'd have a full year, we'd have 12 months reserve. But that's probably a dream down the line. My issue with this topic is that I think there's a little bit of testing by the city manager and city staff, and maybe a little bit on the city, current city council, wondering if we can't reduce that reserve level, so maybe they can grab some money to do something else. And I would be opposed to that. We need to keep, 50% is a minimum reserve, and we can't all of a sudden grab $1 or $2 million out of there and deflect it to something else. I would absolutely be opposed to that.
Mr. Kempz.
I'm concerned that the size of our reserves are depleting. And as they continue to deplete, we have long-term pension liabilities that no one seems to want to refer to as debt. And those pension liabilities are reported over a year ago at $15 million. They're probably more like 17. So the reality is, we may need even more reserves. Our FAC is putting together long-term budgets. We haven't had those. And in putting those budgets together and watching their meetings, they don't have room for infrastructure and for capital improvement before they hit a bottom line that's, that's close to zero. So I'm concerned with our, our reserves. I'm concerned with the fact that, that they're being depleted. As to the actual amount of, of percentage of reserve, I think I would defer to them to actually hear their answers.
Okay, Ms. King.
The 7.2 million is a minimum threshold. We do have a policy of keeping a 50% of our operating budget as a reserve, and our fund actually tends to exceed that level. We have asked the Financial Advisory Committee to help us engage in a reserve study to see if that's an appropriate amount. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that a two-month reserve is appropriate. I think that probably because of the topography of our city and other risks that our city might have that are unique to us, that somewhere between a two and a six month might be appropriate. And that would enable us to use perhaps a small amount of that reserve to pay down pension liability or for other infrastructure needs. But again, I wouldn't do that unless we had a full study that had confirmed that something below 50% is appropriate. And again, I don't think we would ever go as low as 20%. I think the 7.2 million is probably a good minimum threshold. The question is above that.
Okay, Mr. McGowan.
As a member of the Financial Advisory Committee, we have been studying it, and the number, the 50% number today is approximately $9 million out of the 10 that was referred to earlier. We are still having a very difficult time having excess cash from our general fund in order to fund our infrastructure needs, the capital improvement fund, or have money available to pay down any of the accrued, or the accrued unfunded liabilities. We recently did an analysis. FAC reviewed it in its last meeting. We've agreed to table the measure about any potential reduction from the 50% until we get further information and further studies done as to what our needs are in the future. We are very much concerned that taking it below 50% would put serious pressure on the community.
Thank you. Since the FAC or the Financial Advisory Committee has been mentioned, there is a question here regarding that. It says, it asks, what is your position regarding the role of the, of the FAC? Do you feel that the FAC is currently receiving appropriate support from the council to carry out that role? If no, what charges would you advocate? So I guess, Ms. Peterson, if you'd begin.
Council actually created the FAC about a year ago. That was to help us with, you know, have a lot of, we have a lot of experts in our community. And so we wanted to utilize the experts in our community to not only increase community engagement, but as well as help us in the parts that we're not as strong in. So I think that the FAC has been given very clear directions because we wanted them to, like we were talking about earlier, study the reserves. We wanted to have them dive into the pension plans. We wanted them to do inventory and capital assets, capital asset inventories and infrastructure inventory, and seeing the big picture, seeing what our budget needs will be in five years. And maybe not so far as 10 years, because anything could change. A lot of things could change. But we gave them a lot of directions, and so far, I think they've been, you know, performing really well. I think there needs to be more dialogue happening between the FAC and the council and, and the city staff. Right now, the FAC, I'm told to stop.
Finish the sentence.
I think the FAC is heading towards the right direction. I think there could be some improvements as far as the collaboration, but I'm pretty happy with the results so far.
Thank you. Victoria.
So when I became treasurer, this was another thing I was surprised to find. When I was elected, and I said, where is the Finance Committee? And then I discovered there was no Finance Committee. I couldn't believe it. And so I think the response I got from the city council was, well, we're the Finance Committee, which, you know, three lawyers and a doctor and a real estate agent, to me, didn't scream Finance Committee. So we went around in circles for a while, got a Finance Committee formed. And I do feel that the city council initially supported that. I think, I think they didn't. They didn't want a citizens group being the Finance Committee. But then I think we had 33 great candidates that we interviewed, and I think they kind of got on board. But then where it went off was, I think, the city staff really put up the roadblocks for the Finance Committee. And then all of a sudden, the city council didn't support it. And that's been, and then this thing's been at loggerheads for months. It's frustrating, I think, to the committee because they can't get work done. They're used, they're people, all corporate people are used to working and getting things done. Sorry, Renata.
Mr. Kempz.
We have wonderful citizens that have joined that Finance Committee. And when I first got involved, I was curious, and so I explored and met with three of them. And I can share with you that they're so frustrated, and they feel completely and totally handcuffed. And they're desperately trying to help and trying to analyze and trying to make a difference. And they feel that the city manager and the council are not giving them and enabling them with the power to actually contribute and support. I've heard stories about those that are, that are on the FAC trying to actually collaborate with staff and sit down with them, and actually assist them when they're challenged with time to work through issues. And that's been refused. So it, it feels like it's been a constant tug-of-war, and I'd love to see it resolved, and I'd love to contribute to that.
Ms. King.
We did form the Finance Advisory Committee about a year ago. We've got some great people on it. We didn't really have a model for it. We had some direction in terms of what the city council wanted them to accomplish, but we didn't have a model for this committee. And so there definitely was some push and pull in terms of how they would work. What's been happening is that they want to do the source work. They want to create their own work product. That works very unlike any of our other committees, where the staff creates the work and the advisory committee actually reviews it. So this was an entirely new model for the committee, for the staff, and for the city council. But we've worked over the months, and now I think we do have, the committee has a very good working relationship with our finance director. We have gotten into the routine where, in fact, the committee is creating their own work product, and then staff is reviewing it. So it's a little different than any committee that we have, but we've had to accommodate that. And I think that's maybe some of the tension that the questioner was asking about.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGowan.
Well, as a member of the Finance Advisory Committee, I can speak firsthand about it. My biggest problem is a lack of urgency, a lack of a sense of urgency. All five of us think the same way on the committee. I will tell you, they're great people. And we have seen with our fiscal vision that we are hitting some crossroads. And we want to make accelerated analysis done so that we can make decisions to begin to save and put money away and spend appropriately today because we see something incoming in the horizon. We've got a long-range financial model that we began to roll out to our committee at the last meeting. We hope to do it again on the 26th of February with the full city council. And it's going to share an ability to test sensitivities and to look at those competing alternatives. Do we fund down or pay down some of the unaccrued liability? Or do we put money into the capital improvement fund for infrastructure needs or some other option? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCarthy.
Hey, so I can tell you that I looked to the FAC for a great resource for me. I, like my colleagues, I've met with several members of the FAC, and they all admit that there were struggles in the beginning of that process. I also sit on the Traffic Safety Committee and. I also sit on the Traffic Safety Committee, and quarterly, we meet with the mayor with all the committees, and we all give updates. We had a meeting, I think it was just last week, and the FAC was present. They provided an update. They were very positive, and they talked about a five- and a 10-year projection for our budget that they expect to come out, I think, at the end of the month, actually, for city council. So I think it's a great resource. I think it was great putting that committee together, and with anything that you start, there's always struggles at the beginning. There's bumps in the road, and at the end of the day, they all get worked out. And so I think it's a valuable committee, and I'm looking forward to hearing what their projections are.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we begin now with Victoria. Ms. Lozey, the next question, one more finance question. Do you consider the PVE annual budget to be balanced when it annually underpays the CalPERS obligation and borrows additional funds from the city reserves?
Oh, boy. That's a big one. Okay. So it's balanced, oh, this is a hard one. So the city budget is balanced on an operating basis for the money that comes in. We spend the money, but we have to take from reserves when we want to contribute to infrastructure spending. Something's buzzing. Are you guys hearing? Oh, is that you? I'm sorry. This buddy's watch buzzing away.
It's not me.
Okay, sorry. So sorry. So do I consider the budget balanced? I think we have an operating, we balance, the general fund is balanced, that's like our checking account. So we put the money in, we spend money, but when we run out of money in the general fund, we have to take from our reserve funds to pay for things like infrastructure, capital spending, other funds for equipment replacement. So from that perspective, we take out of our savings to put into our checking account. So I don't call that balanced at the end of the day.
Mr. Kemp.
Two issues in addition to what Victoria just said. If you think about your home life, you have a checking account and a savings account, and when one gets drained and one runs out, and you're transferring back and forth to Rob Peter versus Paul, is that a balanced budget? No. On top of it, we have accruing long-term pension liabilities, which in fact turns into debt. We're not paying it off every year. It's growing at a rate of over 7%, and we do not have a balanced budget.
Ms. King?
Government accounting is very tricky. It's based on fund accounting. So yes, we do have a balanced operating budget every year. We don't take money from reserves to pay for other things. We take them from accounts that are earmarked for that particular purpose. So if we're doing a sewer project, we take it from the sewer fund. Those funds can't be used for anything else except that project. If we're doing a capital project, we take it from the capital fund. If we're replacing equipment, we take it from the Equipment Replacement Fund. So we're not taking it from reserves. The reserves that we were talking about earlier are a completely separate fund, and the only time that we have had to go into reserves is the year that Measure D failed. And at that point, even though we lost $5 million, we only took 1.2 million from our reserves. In terms of our pension liability, again, that liability is growing at an exponential rate, thanks in large part to CalPERS, that has taken their investment losses and foisted them on all their member cities. Again, I'm hoping that we can, in our next budget, allocate some money to pay down that unfunded liability.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan.
I'm not going to repeat what everyone else has just said about the balanced budget, but I will just cite a couple of statistics for you. Our overall fund balances, all the assets of the city has declined 25% in the last six years. What concerns me the most is that we are not generating enough surpluses in our operating fund in order to properly fund our capital improvement reserve fund. Our capital reserve fund is projected to be at $1.7 million five months from today, at the end of June 30th. We spend $2.5 to $3 million annually on maintenance and capital improvements out of that fund. We don't have enough resources where our revenues and exceed our expenses in order to properly fund that or do any type of pay down and unaccrued liabilities.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, you know, for intent and purposes of this budget, I believe the budget is balanced, but there's some concerns with the current budget balance. We only pay the minimum into our pension deficit. We didn't put any funds towards the capital improvements, and there are no funds towards equipment and replacement. So although this budget appears balanced to me, going forward, I think we're going to have some issues, like my colleague said, because we're not filling those other terms.
Okay, going on to a more personal question, if you will.
I don't think Betty can say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Betty, sorry.
It's okay. So as far as the balanced budget, you know, as long as we're making more revenue than we're expensing, we're considered balanced. But however, you know, it is true that we don't have as much money to put into our infrastructure improvements. We don't have enough money to look forward in the long term. I think those are very important things to consider. As long as we can pay for our expense, our daily operations, to me, it's not robbing Peter to pay Paul, because at the end of the day, those are all still cities' money. Having a long-term projection, like I said, is still important. The only time we really, we actually tapped money out of the reserves was when we lost Measure D. And luckily, we had Measure E, or else we would have lost another $5 million and another $5 million. So it's good that we have 50% for a rainy day like that, but as far as the balance is concerned in governmental accounting, we are balanced.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Kemp, this is a question. Did any of you grow up in Palos Verdes Estates, and what does that mean to you?
I'm sorry, ask the question again.
Did any of you grow up in Palos Verdes Estates, and what does that mean to you if you did, I guess?
Any of you. I didn't hear the first part. I apologize. I grew up in Rancho Palos Verdes. I was...
It's okay, I'm from there.
I didn't mean it as an elitist answer. I'm sorry. I love both cities, so respectfully, there it is. I grew up in Rancho Palos Verdes, went through all schools, absolutely love our cities. I've actually spent most of my adult life with my family in Palos Verdes Estates, so nothing against RPV. I absolutely love it, and I love our nature and everything else that goes with it. As a child, I didn't, I didn't fully appreciate it. I got to go to Mallory Cove School, and now only we only have administrators there. So I absolutely love our city. That's the answer.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I didn't grow up here. I grew up in Orange County, and my husband grew up in the Midwest, but when our oldest of our three children was starting kindergarten, we were looking for a community that was very much like where we grew up, where we went to our neighborhood school and where we knew all our neighbors. And we were so thrilled that we were able to find that in Palos Verdes Estates. Again, that five-year-old who was starting kindergarten is now 25, and I think when she gets to the point where she's having children, she would love to come back to Palos Verdes Estates here. So it's been a wonderful home for us.
Mr. McGowan.
I did not grow up in Palos Verdes either. I came from a little place called Minnesota, and based upon the weather reports of the last few weeks, we're glad we're out here and not back there. But all kidding aside, I grew up in a community very similar to Palos Verdes Estates, albeit it was a suburb of Minneapolis, it was not on the ocean. And when we got transferred here 23 years ago, we thought we had died and gone to heaven.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy?
I did not grow up in Palos Verdes. I was born and raised in Brooklyn, New York.
Go your alley. Get out.
Very similar to this. I moved out here in 1980 to join the Los Angeles Police Department. I got here on a Friday. I started on Monday. I met my wife in 1985. We had an apartment down on the Esplanade, and we used to look up at the hill and see all the sparkling lights and say, "Hey, you know, one day, we want to live up there." And three houses later, 20 years ago, 21 years ago, we were able to get in when the recession hit. It was actually a good time to buy. Raised my girls here, great place to live. I treasure the parklands. I love the openness. You know, it's just, it's wonderful. New Yorkers come out to visit, and they want to come back, and I have to tell them no. But yes, great place to live.
Ms. Peterson?
I was actually born in Taiwan and moved to the United States in 1989. My first city was La Cañera, and after being there for about a year, my parents decided that they wanted to get closer to the ocean, but still find a place that has just a tremendous school district, so we moved here. Growing up here, it's always quiet and boring, and gosh, I can't wait till I get out of here, but after I had children, we knew that this is the best place to be. Again, the school's great. We have one of the, we're one of the safest cities in the country, and also, we were voted the number-one place to live in California by USA Today. So what could be, you know, wrong with being here? So I love the city, and this is why I wanted to run and wanted to contribute and wanted to give back to the community that I love so much. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lozey?
So I did not grow up in Palos Verdes Estates. I grew up in Hollywood Riviera, right down the street. The thing I remember most about is Palos Verdes High School. I played basketball in high school, and I remember, I don't know why, 35 or 40 years later, I remember a basketball game at PV High, so that was my best memory there. I actually, my husband and I lived, moved here 10 years ago, and kind of same reasons as other people said, you know, we were in Manhattan, Redondo Beach, and I remember looking, walking on the strand and looking up at the hill and thinking, geez, I've traveled the whole world for that view and that feeling. And wow, it was there the whole time. I felt like Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz. And so when, same, when we were looking for, when our kids were more middle school and high school, we really thought we needed to make a firmer decision on schools, and we looked here first. And then also, just when you drive up the hill, you just feel that it's special, and you feel the open space, and you know that makes it a special place, and that's how we landed here.
Okay. Next one. I think we have parents with children who are here, and this is, this question is, "I am an eighth grader at PV Intermediate School. What are the biggest risks to me and my friends growing up in this community, and what will you do about it?" So...
That's a great question.
Ms. King?
Thank you for that question. What are the biggest risks? I guess we do see that on occasion, I think somebody, maybe it was Betty, who was saying it seemed kind of slow and boring when she was growing up here as a teenager. And when things are slow and boring, teenagers try to find things that are new and exciting. And so that is a risk, certainly. We, as a city council, in part tried to address that risk by enacting a social host ordinance, which holds parents responsible for having parties in their home, for serving alcohol to underage students or providing them with illegal drugs. And so I think that is one of the biggest risks, that you might be influenced by your friends to participate in that, but really, it's the adults here in the room who should be watching out for that, and hopefully, through the social host ordinance and through talking with your neighbors and communicating with parents, that will be much less of a risk for you.
Thank you. Mr. McGowan?
I think one of the biggest risks for an eighth grader and his or her parents is the intergenerational transfer of, that I project with regards to our finances. We, this age group is utilizing the assets of our community. We're not putting adequate reserves away to pay for replacement and improvement into the future, and our kids, our grandkids, and our great-grandkids need to look at Palos Verdes Estates in perpetuity, and we need to be providing today for their future. And I think that's where I would put the biggest risk.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
You know, we live in a bubble. You know, our kids are raised here, and if they go to school here and they do everything on the hill, there's a life out there that's different than this hill. So we spend a lot, my wife and I spend a lot of time talking to the girls about what life is like off the hill, which they're going to spend a lot of time. So I think life lessons about what goes on out there versus here, traffic, young drivers, like Jennifer said, drinking, there's a whole bunch of things that you really need to take into account, but really, be aware of life other than on the hill.
Ms. Peterson?
I think not just eighth graders or high school kids are dealing with this, I think actually the adults are dealing with this, too. Social media. Social media and kindness and how we treat each other is one of the biggest risks, I think, that we are facing right now. Not just finances, whatnot, because that's, that's different city, different day, but here, I had to actually have conversations with my children, saying that, you know, mommy's being attacked on social media for no really good reason. And so we were planning to go to the golf course to have one of these PVEs with the mayor, and I said, "There might be people that are coming up to mommy and saying not nice things to me, but you know that, you know who's important to me and whose opinion that I value the most." And that, to me, is actually one of the biggest risks that we have, because people are not so nice to each other nowadays, and we really need to change that.
Thank you. Ms. Lozey?
Well, I have to say, the first thing that popped in my mind when you said, "What's the biggest risk to eighth graders?" Crazy parent drivers. That's the one that pops into my mind. And I think it's also fresh in my mind, because I was at a meeting yesterday with people who live near one of the elementary schools, and they no longer have kids in school, but that was a huge concern to them, is just that, you know, they lived on a street that I think because of the cycle of the drop-off, it became, their street became the one that people were kind of whipping down and turning around and heading the other way to get their kids dropped off on the wrong side of the road. I live near PVIS, and I see all kinds of crazy things, including sometimes people almost running over their own kid. So, ah, slow down. But I do think that is an issue for our police, in all seriousness. I do think, I think that's something that we probably need to do a little bit better job of asking our police to monitor around the schools, because I think that's a big risk area.
Thank you. Mr. Kemp?
I'm going to camp on to a couple of the other issues and add the first one that came to my head. I'm in technology, and so by default, I say, you know, we're isolated already on the hill, and there's pluses and minuses to that, but what contributes to that isolation is our kids' use of technology, in particular texting and withdrawing and being in their holes, if you will. And I think, you know, Betty made some comments about, you know, being kind to each other, et cetera, and I'll add to that. I think it's easier to hide behind the technology, and it's easier to withdraw and not be as, you know, as social. And so I'd like to see the community having offerings, you know, we really don't have a single park in our city. And I realize that we have financial challenges and affordability issues, but it would be nice to see either the city or the school district somehow come together, go fund me, do something, to pull kids out of their texting holes and into playgrounds.
Thank you. Since we're talking about social media, we have a question about that. It says, "Given the challenge of dialogues on social media sites, what is the best way council should communicate their message?" And we begin with Mr. McCarthy, I believe.
I think it's, I think it's...
Do I have it wrong?
McGowan, I think.
Mr. McGowan, sorry.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Sure. "Given the challenge of dialogues on social media sites, what is the best way council should communicate their message?"
Well, I think the council needs to do more town meetings. I think we've got a lot of issues within our city that we need to have some town hall get-togethers, and we need to lay out in a complete, open-book manner the competing resources and competing items that we are, need to fund with those resources. And it's best, in my mind, I'm maybe old-school in the fact that I like to meet with people one-on-one or in groups such as this, rather than to try to take a distorted snippet out of a Twitter or a text message, which many times gets misconstrued, and you many times also don't know who the author is.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McGowan?
Okay. I'm McCarthy. I'll go.
No.
Mr. McCarthy, yeah, right. You both begin with MCs.
Switch seats.
Sorry.
So I agree with Dave on a lot of that, but I think we need, I think we need a social media component. We have a lot of young residents and kids we want to get the message out to, so I think we need to tap all those social media things, the Twitter, the Snapchat, the Facebook, the EIEIO, whatever's out there. I think we need to tap all those resources to get the message out.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Peterson?
So the best way to communicate, depending on what demographics we're talking about, right? So I know there are people that are so used to getting newsletters, and they're not anymore, because we're only doing newsletters once a quarter, so we need to keep that going. There's definitely a social media component of this, but the city is now utilizing more Facebook and more Twitter. Sign up for our accounts if you haven't. But I think the most valuable thing is still picking up the phone or talking to people face-to-face. Talk to the source.
You know, there are so many people that are having misinterpretations or misinformation that are just out there and when you read it seven times, sometimes it becomes the truth that you live in. So to me, that's not a very good way to communicate. Call, write emails, you know, face-to-face. This is also why I started doing the monthly walk and talk with the mayor, so we can have this face-to-face dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lozey.
So I think that the communication from the city council out to the residents is a multi-pronged approach, depending on what it is you're trying to accomplish. So after Measure D failed, we had engaged, the Davenport Institute, which is the public policy arm of Pepperdine University, wanted to, actually, we were a test, an interesting test case, which I'm not sure you wanted to be an interesting test case, but they thought that we were a city that could use help with its communication. So for example, if you want public input on an issue, so I think when it's budget season and we're trying to figure out how to allocate our precious dollars, you need a town hall type forum so that people can come and give input. I think social media, I think, is only really good if you're trying to have an outward message. So I need to tell you something and here it is. I also think the city website and newsletters need to be better, more dynamic ways of, it is a way of, another way of informing, but I think those could be much better tools.
Mr. Kemp.
So all the above is cumulative, but let me add to it. I think Facebook Live would be tremendous. I think that when you think of social media, you think, oh, young demographic only, but I think Facebook is actually starting to mix those demographics and that an older population is starting to pay attention and to use that, you know, whereas our kids look at us and they say, Facebook, you're crazy, I'm not using that. So that means it's working to me. So that's a wonderful one. Town halls are so important and I don't, I don't see enough of them. And another, another to add is, I'm frequently attending city council meetings as a member of the public today and I tend to see the same faces over and over again. I think we need to actually encourage people to come because they're frustrated and they're seeing things in social media, et cetera, and they're not participating. So I'd love to actually see them here.
Okay. Ms. King.
I think this is something the city council can definitely improve on. I think we need to ask the questions when we're trying to communicate with our residents. Who are we trying to communicate with and what's the purpose of the communication? The who in our city is very different. We have residents that consume information in many different ways. So I think we need to use a variety of sources. We need to use the newspaper, our newsletter, some types of social media, the social media that's coming from our city, emails. Some people have told me they would like more texts, so we can do that lots of different ways. We also have engaged the Davenport, not just for Measure D, but to improve our citizen engagement and communication. And so the whys are, you know, are we just trying to inform residents? Do we want to consult with residents or do we want to collaborate with them? And so depending on the purpose of the communication, there are many different forums that we can use in terms of focus groups or town hall meetings or one-on-one conversations, depending on the purpose of the communication.
Thank you. Okay, I've got it right now. Mr. McCarthy. Right? Okay. Going back to some city issues, some complain that PVE codes are not enforced in regard to landscaping, weeds, home maintenance, unfinished construction, et cetera. Others feel the city is too strict about code enforcement and that their property rights are being infringed upon. What is your take? Is the current level of code enforcement appropriate or do we need stricter or looser code enforcement? Mr. McCarthy.
The city has limited resources with respect to code enforcement and I can just see that on the Traffic Safety Committee. In the Traffic Safety Committee, we get complaints about speed. They want speed bumps, they want stop signs, they want crosswalks. And at the end of the day, it really comes down to money. There's only so much you can do. So I think the Parklands Committee needs to work with the city council and see if we can come out and kind of prioritize what some of the bigger issues are and focus resources towards that.
Okay, Ms. Peterson.
I agree with Kevin. We only have a part-time code enforcement officer as of right now and there are a lot of things that we can't, you know, even, even though we have policies that we need to enforce, we don't have the manpower to get there. So it's utilizing the resources and finding out the priorities and actually going, I think going back to council to see if there's anything that, if we're just not enforcing it, why are we actually, you know, keeping that as part of our policy? And on top of that, I think as the demand grows, we might need to appropriate some more money and maybe get a full-time law enforcement, code enforcement officer. It really depends on what the priority of the council is and the priority of our community as well.
Okay, Ms. Lozey.
It seems to me on this, I understand that we have a part-time code enforcement officer, but for me, the issue is just consistency and fairness. And my observation is if you know how to work the system, you get away with a little bit and you kind of maybe get a little more than what you're, what's fair to everybody else. So I think it has to be fair and I think we, maybe that, you know, maybe we do have to apply more resources. I can't say if this part-time code enforcement officer is very busy or not busy at all. So I'd have to have an observation on that. But to me, if we have a rule that's, you know, no enforcement in the parklands, then the rule is no enforcement in the parkland. It's not for some people and not for others and this one's okay because it's not really bothering anybody, but that one's not okay. So I have an issue with that and I think all the rules have to be applied uniformly, consistently and fairly across all our residents.
Mr. Kemp.
I hear a lot of frustration from residents on this, in particular around trees and cutting and controlling. I heard a story from a resident that had been actually suing their neighbor, which is unbelievably sad, because the city would not actually come and enforce an ordinance. So I understand the financial challenges and I understand the part-time issues, but I think we need a greater focus on this. And so I, in direct answer to your question, I think it's a little bit too light.
Okay, Ms. King.
Our policy, which we've instructed for our code enforcement officer, is that there is a tiering or a priority of enforcement issues. So first is safety, second are encroachments, and then third are complaints from other residents. We had a full-time code enforcement officer before the failure of Measure D. I think at that point, we had a very good equilibrium where she was able to have time to go out and find those areas that were unsafe and make that a real priority. She left and we did not fill that position for quite some time. Very recently, within just the last couple of months, we now have a new part-time code enforcement officer, not a pensionable position. And I, we've given him the same instruction in terms of safety, access, resident complaints. I'm sure that there was also a backlog of resident complaints because we went over a year without a code enforcement officer. So he is trying to balance those priorities in enforcing and I'm sure that we'll, we'll be working with him.
Mr. McGowan.
Yes, I'll just echo what they've all said with fairness and consistency of the application of the existing ordinances. I think that's mandatory. But as we've already identified, we were operating without a code enforcement officer for a number of months. We now have a part-time one. It becomes an issue of prioritization and dollarization. And where do we want to put our investments? And those are all decisions that we need the input from the public to help us balance those types of priorities.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson, the next question somewhat relates to this. To save money, do you think city halls should be satisfied with as many contractors as possible and the minimal number of directly employed city employees?
There are certain positions that actually can be contracted out and there are certain that cannot. So I think there's a balance of what we can actually legally do and what we cannot. And I understand that, you know, people are saying if we have a lot of higher-ins, then they're percible, which I understand it's also, it's a big concern of ours, but we are utilizing part-timers that are not percible to offset our unfunded liabilities. So I think that's something that's to be considered. I know that when you contract out, there's less control that we have, so that needs to be considered as well. I don't think it's a very easy question to blanket answer.
Thank you. Ms. Lozey.
I do agree with that statement or the premise of the question. I do think that we need, and this is the name of the game in city, city operations these days, in California at least, and that is having as few part-time, or few full-time